From the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association to talk about medical calls for service presentation and discussion. And we have slides and we have Karen Stewart here from the SBIA to do the presentation for us. So I'm going to turn it over to Karen whenever she's ready.
Okay, thanks. Well, thank you for having me. I'm hoping that ultimately this presentation is going to be something that is going to be helpful to the residents of Simsbury to help them understand the service that we provide to the town. There have been quite a few questions out there and people don't quite always understand exactly what we do and how we work, and so we thought we'd try to cover all this so to use as a point of discussion and maybe have further questions and more education out there for the general public. So to start off with, we just kind of did a bit of a history of our association. Please feel free to stop me if you have questions as we go along. I don't want to do death by PowerPoint because you obviously kind of see the slides. So we've been in town since 1957. This is going to be our 65th year of providing services to the town of Simsbury. The picture on this first slide was our very first vehicle that we received from the Kiwanis Club. EMS pretty much started off as a, either a hearse or you've got help. So it was kind of the choice. That's how it all started off with. So it was very basic back then in the 50s. So we are a nonprofit and we've, over the years, have been trying to grow and to expand and to meet whatever the town's requirements are for emergency services, constantly reevaluating what we need to do. So as I stated, 1957 is when we first started as a nonprofit. In 1974, the state regulations changed, so people that were volunteering had to get further training and education in order to become EMTs. In 1995, although we were pretty much relying solely on donations, we realized that, or the association realized that they couldn't keep going, so they started billing insurance companies for ambulance transports. In 1997, we received approval from the state to become a paramedic level service. Prior to that, the town of Simsbury actually paid UConn to be the paramedic service to come into town. I believe it was Avon and Farmington and Simsbury all hired them to be the paramedics, because we were just providing the basic level of EMS. So in 1997, they stopped doing that and Simsbury started taking over that service. In 2000, we expanded our facility on West Street. We actually are on Old Mill Lane, but the front of our building faces on the West Street, right across from Mill Rights, in case anybody doesn't know where we're located. In 2011, we expanded our service to have cardiac monitoring equipment, which is basically a $35,000 piece of equipment that allows us to do EKGs on scene in your home if you're having chest pain or cardiac issues, and we can transmit that to the hospitals so the doctors have that prior to our arrival, so they can already see what's going on and be prepared for when we arrive in the AED. In 2013, the state started a program called the Heart Safe Community, and so along with myself and some other staff members, we went through the process of getting an application in for the town of Simsbury, so we became a heart safe community, which basically means that we're committed to training a certain number of residents in CPR to help extend patients' chances of surviving sudden cardiac arrest. 2016, we had our third ambulance, and the reason for the third ambulance is in order to maintain a two ambulance service, you have to have another ambulance that allows for one to be out for service or for maintenance, that type of situation. I feel like I'm like zooming in there, so please make your time. In 2016, we started stacking the second ambulance due to the increase in the call volume. We felt it was important for us to do that because we recognized that there was definite need in the town despite the costs that were associated with it. And also in 2016, we started hiring more paid EMTs to fill up the gaps for the lack of volunteers that we were having. So in 2016, we had about 2,800 hours of volunteer time, and the community dropped almost to 1,700 hours in 2018. It's gone up a little bit, but it has never returned to those original numbers. In 2017, we've celebrated our 60th year of continuous service to the town of Simsbury, and in 2019, we were one of the 13 agencies that received an award from American Heart Association for our excellence in cardiac stroke care. Now currently, we're comprised still of a mixture of volunteers and paid staff. We do have about 10 to 12 volunteers that are still actively writing with us, but we're about 82% paid at this point. So we are paid staff of both EMTs and paramedics, and our engaged board of directors is exposed to both volunteer members and members, outside members in the community that have joined our board to help us with the work that we're doing. I was actually given a nice summary of our board members, so I know, can let the town know who's on our board. We have Russ Revenhour, who's an EMT. He's a senior treasury portfolio manager at Webster Bank. Brian Clancy, who is our president, is also an EMT. He is the assistant vice president and actuary at Travelers Insurance. Lindsay Pinkham is president and CEO, retired from the Connecticut Bankers Association. Dan Milliman, who's an EMT. He's an EMT technician at St. Francis Hospital. Our newest member is Chris Kelly, who just joined us. He's a vice president of Knights of Columbus Insurance, a former Simsbury selectman. Corey Jodes, she's a National Ski Patrol trainer up at Apima Mountain Resort. And then Pete Cadone, who's the retired chairman, president, CEO of Vantus Life Insurance Group. So we have quite a variety of board members, which is very useful for our association. So the next part is a discussion about the differences between EMTs and paramedics. Some people don't recognize the difference, or don't understand, or think they're interchangeable. EMT is the basic level of life support that we can provide. They take 150-hour training course to achieve state certification. They can perform CPR, they can use an AED, they can provide you with oxygen, check your blood sugar, take your blood pressure, they can do basic splinting, they can give you epinephrine if you're having an allergic reaction, which is like an EpiPen, and they can give you Narcan if you suffer from an opiate overdose. Paramedics are a little bit above and beyond that. We go through about 1,800 hours, almost 20 months' worth of training to get our certification, and we can do a whole lot more. So we're allowed to give medications, we can start IVs, we can do EKGs. If you go into respiratory arrest and you can't breathe, we can intubate you and support your breathing until we get to the hospital. If you have low blood sugar, we can give you dextrose to raise your blood sugar up. The list goes on and on, dealing with trauma, giving pain medication, everything, just about everything you can do in an emergency room, for the most part, we can handle in the back of the ambulance. So the big question that I wanted to kind of address is to educate people on what happens when you actually call 911, because some people don't understand exactly what the process is behind the phone call that you make. So when you first call 911, the dispatcher is trained to recognize and understand what your emergency is and to make sure that the help that you need is sent to you in an expeditious fashion. So they're going to ask you questions, and a lot of people, when they call, it's, "Stop asking me questions, just send me help." And you need to understand that even though they're asking you the questions, the ball is already rolling, the help is already on its way, but they need to have some more information so they can understand what you need and who you need. So they go through a process which is called the Emergency Medical Dispatching System, and that's what, and that's what they use to decide, especially if it's a medical emergency, how we're going to respond to you. They're very, it can either be lights or sirens, or it could be with flow of traffic based on what you tell them in terms of what your needs are. So we don't always come lights and sirens. It's a safety issue and it's also a necessity based on what your actual emergency is. Despite whether, I know we know it's an emergency to you, but some things are not life-threatening, and it's not necessary for us to put our crews at risk to go through the traffic blaring lights and sirens and getting through red lights and people not hearing us or seeing us, so. Also, when you call 911, our police department are first responders, so they're already out on the road. They're already there to get to you as expeditionally as possible. They could be there within minutes to your home. They can provide basic first aid, oxygen, and help you out and determine what the situation is and to give information back to the dispatchers and to the ambulance, so we know we can get an update before we arrive, which is very useful and extremely helpful. We work very well with our police department. It's a great group of people. You can also give Narcan if you have an overdose, and oxygen is, like I said, best, well.
Karen, just so everybody knows, police are dispatched on every medical call, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's important, and I think that's really important, and we appreciate that. That's a, that's a high level of service that's provided.
Absolutely, no, it's extremely helpful to us. And it makes, it's just the fastest way to get help right off the bat, so for sure.
It is. So there's, I mean, there's a trained, there's a trained professional coming to your home within several minutes of that 911 call, right?
Correct. If not one, possibly two. Oftentimes, you'll hear, if any mail addresses to the scanners, they dispatch an officer. One officer may go lights and sirens, and the second one will go with the flow of traffic. So oftentimes, you might even get two. I think I discussed the lights and sirens part. The main reason we use the lights and sirens is to decrease the response time in case of a life or limb threatening emergency. In addition to the police department, we often work with the fire department. This is usually for motor vehicle accidents, if the CO detector has gone off and somebody's not feeling well. So we also collaborate with them very well on calls as well. We use them if we can't get into a home, they can help us get into a house without having to beat down all the doors to get in, things like that, so.
Just, sorry, just one more during rough weather situations, right? We're also coordinating with Public Works.
Oh, absolutely.
Often, so Tom's crew's out front trying to plow the roads.
Yep.
Help everybody get in, right? And that's.
And they've listened in the past and have been able to come to homes if the driveway's not plowed to help us out to get us in, absolutely.
Right, and in power situations, trees are down, wires, et cetera.
Yep.
Sadly, we have a pretty robust history of that in town with police department, fire department, and ambulance having to get to some pretty challenging situations, so.
Didn't want to go without Tom's crew not getting credit. Thank you.
That's true. All right, so back to the mention before, we do currently have three ambulances, and we have two what we call fly cars or intercept vehicles. Currently, our fleet is a, we have a 2021 ambulance, which we actually had took the box off an older ambulance and put it onto a new chassis to help save some money. We have a 2015 ambulance and 2013 ambulance, and our fly cars, one's really old, it's 2006, but still on the road and go in, and we have a 2017 as our newest one.
Is it that old? I thought it was pretty old. I wasn't sure how.
The older one?
Yeah.
2006, the expedition. When we first got that one, that was like a Christmas tree, and now it's just the old little cars.
Could you repeat again how old the ambulances are?
Our newest one's a 2021.
Okay.
And then there's 2015 and 2013.
And what's the usual, the typical life for an ambulance?
Well, pre-COVID, we were pretty, we were pretty much exchanging them on a pretty regular basis. We would have them maybe two or three years, and my approach is totally different now. I can't find chassis right now to even get a new ambulance, and it's, it's been years. So they, they all get pampered. They go for spa days, they get their oil changed, their tires rotated, polished and come. They definitely are babying these guys. The 2015 actually has the most mileage on it. It has about 175,000 miles on it, so it's getting to the point where it needs to be replaced, so.
But in your business, there's the front, right? And then there's the back, and you're refurbishing the back more often than the front?
Yes.
Right.
Yep. So if you, if you see, so we have two different styles of ambulances. One has what looks like a van front, and then the box goes on the back, and then one, the 2013, which is a little bit of a rougher ride, so it's lower miles, it actually has a truck, has a Silverado chassis, so it's a little bit of a rougher ride. It's a little bit smaller in the back, but if the box stays in good shape, you pretty much can just pick that up and just put it on a whole new truck chassis, which saves a lot of money.
But ballpark, what's a brand ambulance cost?
$250,000, $300,000.
And a refurb is?
The last one we did, I think we would spend $120,000 on it.
So that's important, and that's traditionally, you folks have looked to save money by going to refurb, right?
And plus, since they're in the garage, they're, you know, they're being washed all the time, we get all the salt off of it, they're basically, they're being, they're sitting outside in the weather and resting and things like that.
I have a question. Does that include, like, everything in the back too, or just the car?
That's just the vehicle.
Yeah.
Actually, the answer to that, you brought that up, because we had our state inspection today and asked the state inspector, "Is anybody ever calculating what actually costs to put everything into the ambulance?"
Yeah.
He's like, "I don't think so." I'm like, "Oh, I'm going to have a free day. I'm going to sit down and try to figure out what that is, because it's a lot of equipment."
And it's, you have to update it, make sure it's current.
Right, and the stock always has to be restocked, and so we have, between the cardiac monitor, like I said, is about $35,000. The stretcher mounting and the stretcher is another $50,000. That does come with the ambulance, you have to add all that, plus the radios. It adds up pretty quick. Okay, so now how our crews are scheduled. So when we started, it was a 24/7, 365 days a year was, where the volunteers were pretty much covering. We've had the paramedic service for that timeframe since 1997, and as I mentioned before, we started second, started stacking the second ambulance in 2016. It was pretty much running Monday through Friday, nine to five. We were trying to get the peak times of when things were the busiest, and that worked out for a while, and we had enough staff to cover all that. I think unfortunately, things changed a little bit with COVID and some staffing issues. However, we recognized it was, there was still a need for it, so we've been constantly trying to hire as many people and just keep the staffing up so we can keep the second ambulance going, which is currently running now 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We're not 100% seven days a week, but we're getting pretty close to that point where we have enough staff to do that, and we are very sensitive to that. We try to make combinations. If we don't have enough to staff both of them, we put a paramedic in the fly car, put two people in the ambulance, so that there's a way to spread our crews around as best we can in town to offer help and assistance.
And just remind me, we brought the, the second ambulance down during COVID, right?
So yeah, we, when we, the call volume wasn't there because people were just not calling 911, and there was a significant drop in some of the graphs that I have that I think I've shared before instead of the public safety meeting. It just, it just was a huge dive, and it just didn't make financial sense to keep running it, because people were, and even if they did call, they didn't want to go to the hospital, which if we don't take them to the hospital, there's no way, you can't bill for that, so there's no monetary benefit to that.
And that's really important right now. I know that's in the funding, but that's something we've talked about a lot at various levels, is there's your call volume, and then there's your transport volume, right?
Correct, yep.
And you only get reimbursed from a transport basis. Now, there's obviously donations and other pieces, but from a pure funding standpoint, the bigger this is, the more challenging it is to fund the ambulance, right?
It was, it was tough. When COVID first started, people were definitely concerned, they were very alarmed, they didn't know what to do, they weren't feeling good. We tried to even educate people, "The time to please call us, no matter what, if you have chest pain, short."
Chest pain, shortness of breath, don't hesitate. If we'll get there, we can assess at the time whether it makes sense to do it or not.
But people just, they just didn't want to go to the hospital during, when it first started. They were just really scared, and so we saw a huge drop, and it was just, we had some volunteers that didn't want to volunteer anymore because of COVID, they were concerned about bringing it home to their families, so there were a whole bunch of factors that really just kind of, kind of hit our staffing levels and call volume level, so.
And then what, June, July, the second ambulance went back on 7 to 7, for the most part?
For this year, yeah. We started ramping up probably in February, March, but yeah, for pretty consistently from the middle of summer to the end of the year, we're, we're doing it pretty well, so.
Yeah, I just, that'll be important later when we look at the data. Thanks.
So another part that makes our service work so well is the fact that we have mutual aid. And mutual aid is an arrangement that we have with Granby and with Canton, where we've agreed, and it's part of our emergency plan for the town, that we have arrangements with them. If they need us for help, we go to them, and if we need them, they come to us as well. So Granby currently schedules two ambulances during the day as well, Canton has one, and then we have our two. So in the valley, basically during the day, there are five ambulances to cover this area. Pretty big area, especially since Granby goes up into the Heartlands. Recently, we had some calls into Bloomfield. Unfortunately, that's, fortunately, that's gotten better because the staffing was kind of low in Hartford, so Bloomfield was really having a tough time, so they were calling us a few times.
Do they have their own, or is it contracted?
So Bloomfield is a hype, kind of a hybrid volunteer, but they use AMR a lot. So an AMR was very, was very short-staffed in the city. It was just, it was tough going there for a little while. Seems to be better now.
Okay, and then Canton was down, or is down, the second ambulance, right?
I'm not sure if they still are, but I know they, they were, so.
Is mutual aid, like, we have it with town of Granby, and they, do they have it with other people, like, or is it exclusive?
It's pretty much the three of us are all together.
Okay, so they don't go, they don't, they only do us and the three of us do each other, right? Okay.
As a formal agreement, yes. So we, so we, and Granby covers Granby, East Granby, and the Heartlands.
Okay.
And then obviously, we have our town, and then Canton has theirs. And I don't believe Canton has an agreement. I know sometimes New Hartford going out that direction comes in to Canton, but I don't know what they have for arrangements outside of that direction.
Okay.
I'd have to look up and see if they have, actually have an arrangement.
And we all know this, but Avon's not included because they're AMR, right?
Correct, yep.
Oh, I just see in the data that there's a handful of times that you provided service to Avon.
That's happened a couple of times. In fact, there was a pretty big accident a few weeks ago on Route 44, and we actually ended up winning to Avon again just because everything had just been stripped and there was nobody else around, so. That doesn't happen very often.
Yeah.
Occasionally it does. That means if AMR is calling us to go into Avon, that's not a good sign.
Oh, okay.
So, because they, with their water bearing Hartford divisions, they have quite a few ambulances, so. It does happen. I mean, being so close to the town line too, as well.
What's interesting, and we'll get into it more in the data, right, is mutual aid is a very complex concept in terms of, the system is built for redundancies, and there's, generally speaking, there's always somebody to call. The challenge is, how far away is the somebody to call, right?
Correct, yep.
And the more calls, obviously, on the dispatch side, the dispatcher has to spend more and more time trying to find ambulances available, and that's wherever that ambulance comes from, right, is, is part of the, you know, part of the response challenge.
Yes.
It's, it's the reality of a suburban system, right, and we all deal with it in Connecticut, right?
Right.
And across the country, but it's, it's an important thing that I don't, and a lot of what we're going to talk about a little bit later is those response times and who's doing what, and so again, there's a police officer on the scene, but now there's 15 minutes to dispatch, there's maybe, you know, if it's coming from UConn, there's a 25-minute ride time. That's a really long time for a person that's having an emergency, yet the system is working the way it's designed, right? So that, that is the challenge in terms of the patient experience, as Eric and I have talked about it, versus the system experience, right? So that's part of what we're going to talk about in a little bit.
And then nothing, and then the point that you brought up as well, is that despite, in addition to the mutual aid, you're still getting the aid.
The aid from the police department. So somebody is going to be going to you as quickly as possible, so at least you're
first aid experience, so you're not sitting there completely by yourself. There's definitely somebody there who's got some, able, unable, ability to communicate with their dispatchers and to update the services that are coming into town. All right, so how we're funded is the next question. A lot of people don't realize that we started off as a volunteer service and that initially we didn't charge for anything, and now we pretty much rely on donations. We do a fundraiser once a year, we send out a flyer and request donations to be made. And we also bill for insurance, and the billing rates, that was another thing that people don't understand, are set by the state of Connecticut. We don't pick what we bill. We're told by the state what the amount is, what we're going to bill. They tell us what a basic life support call is going to cost, and what an advanced paramedic level call is going to cost, and how much we're going to charge for mileage, so that we have actually no say in that, so. So we also bill insurance, such as Medicare, Medicaid, the big guys, Cigna, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Canadicare, but the reimbursement rate for Medicare is what's really pretty, not devastating, but it's tough to deal with because we pretty much, and I realize this is a little bit of a typo, our reimbursement rate is really only 39%, not 47% of what we bill in Medicare. So for example, if we bill approximately $1,400, which is a paramedic level ambulance ride to the hospital, nine, about $900 of that we have to write off. It's uncollectible.
So that $1,400 is set by the state?
Yes.
And then Medicare doesn't reimburse you for what's set by the state?
They do not.
Okay.
And we can't charge, the person doesn't get charged, I guess?
No, so usually what happens, especially in our town, and we're very fortunate, knock on wood, that a lot of people are very, are well insured, so they have a Medicare plan and they have a supplemental plan.
Oh, supplemental, yeah, yeah.
But even so, that still doesn't cover all of that. So we, of the $1,400, we probably get about $550, $560 of that, $560 of that. The rest of, and the rest of it is uncollectible and we have to write it off. And if they have Medicaid as their secondary, we don't get anything, you know, beyond that, so.
That's how, that's how government works.
Yep.
Makes no sense sometimes.
Okay, and the last, the last graphic is just the, some, by the numbers for 2021. So basically shows that, based on the data that I got from dispatch, I was able to calculate the total number of actual medical dispatchers that came in completely for the town of Simsbury, which is the 2,533 calls. Of those, 2,146 of us, calls were responded to by SVA, and of those, only 1,427 were transports. So the balance of that, the 719, is an unbillable amount. So even though we responded to those calls, they were either refusals, cancels, as we treated on-site, we're able to correct an issue, whether it was a low blood sugar or something else, and they just didn't get transported.
Okay, Karen, that's, that one's a slippery slope, right? Because we want people to call 911.
Absolutely.
Right, so we're not trying to reduce those numbers in any way.
No, absolutely, absolutely not.
No, 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 but it's, it's a reality of quote-unquote doing business, and that there's always going to be some level of non-transport.
Right, that's correct.
We always spoke, we always want folks to call 911.
I would much rather go to them and see that they, they called, and it turns out that it's a non-issue or whatever, are we able to help? I mean, it's as simple as, they just, they slipped out of their chair, they just need help getting back up, and otherwise, they're fine. Absolutely.
Yeah.
We're there to help.
And I know, I know that's your philosophy, and I know it's the police department and the fire department, always err on the side of call 911, let the three of your agencies decide whether it truly is an emergency or not.
Yep, absolutely.
So that's, that's really an important piece.
Yep, and they can call us, and if, even if we get there and they change their mind, I mean, they change, two minutes later, they can always call us back and we can come back again, so it's, we're, we're there to give them whatever aid that they need.
Okay.
And the last two comes, talks about the mutual aid numbers, so the 387 calls were the responses from other agencies coming into our town, and then in turn, we went out 237 times to other towns, so. And this word is kind of numbers, and that was small percentage. A lot of information to kind of throw, to give for you to think about, and if there's any questions about anything, I'm happy to answer them or discuss.
I just want to clarify, you, you have one that's 24/7, and then one that's seven to seven.
Correct.
Staffed, right? And from this chart, 387 out of total 20, I mean, it's a sort of small-ish percentage of the mutual aid that replies, correct? I mean, most, most of the time, we're available to go.
Yep.
Based on this.
I think I had actually, and I know that Eric and Sean had done some analysis of the numbers too. I mean, it, it's there. It may be a smaller number, but it's certainly a factor in our services of what we have, so it's not something that, it works really well with Granby and Simsbury have a great working relationship. I work very well with Kate Coop as the chief up there, she and I communicate all the time, and we understand the town's various needs and try to make sure that everybody's kind of covered, the staff knows each other, and so it's just a, it's, we're very fortunate for the situation we have with them.
Does that, the chart you just showed for 2021, is it, you know, seeing that we're still in, with the effects of the pandemic, was 2019, sort of pre-pandemic, a similar chart? Is that, is this pretty, like, a pretty common what a year looks like for you?
It's not, it's not too far off. I would.
I would say the year prior, the one COVID, this topic.
Oddball, it's always going to be that one year that just sticks out like a sore thumb, but I think we started to kind of get back to normal towards the end of 2020, and then 2021 seems to be more on task again.
Okay, great.
And Karen, just remind me, we've talked about this at public safety a couple times over the years, but with the building of apartments, there was an urgent care facility but with the building of apartments, there was an urgent care facility on the north end of town that has since closed. But there's been a lot of increase in the call volume over, I'd say, a lot the last 10 years as a result of the increase in population and different level of services in town?
Oh, absolutely, but anthology coming in, they're, they're huge, I mean, it's yes. There's no, there's no looking back. These numbers are going to keep increasing for sure.
Right. And I mean, just from a historical perspective, Chief, you were there and, and Matt, I think you were as well. Is when that urgent care facility came on the north end of town at Dorset Crossing, I think that's when the second ambulance started ramping up?
Right, we, I think that year we had 300 calls just out of that facility alone.
Right. So that was an interesting time, because all of a sudden that kid, that one came out of Love Field, I think. So an important connection with the planning, zoning, building, and then emergency services and that, you know, as we're growing and as more stuff comes in on our town in particular, it adds to the level of services provided, right?
Yep.
So those places will call you guys to come if somebody comes in there? Is that what you're saying? Somebody might go to an urgent care? So that actually could increase the amount of calls?
Yeah, well.
The stories I remember, right, is some, there was a lot of folks coming in with chest pains in particular from the northern side of the border and they were going to the urgent care and not calling 911. And then you guys were getting dispatched for the 911 call, right? Is a lot of what I think was going on.
Yep.
Which is, again, great, that people were calling 911. Um, but again, that was a facility that, you know, what increased our call volume, what, 12% of the time, I think?
Just about, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, yep. It just makes you wonder how many calls that, that, I don't know how many, how much they did in terms of volume out of that facility alone. But if three, of it, we took that many out of there, it was a, it was quite a, quite a significant jump, for sure.
Now, folks will say that facility is since closed, but as you said, we've added an anthology. We've added other facilities in town that have more than taken up the volume. So we're still at the same numbers, we're higher, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, with the apartment complexes, for sure, yeah.
Well, I thought I could walk through, the group through some of the data analysis that I did. And that could drive some questions in the next part of the conversation, if that works for you.
Sure.
Okay?
Love it.
So I think that the, the next, you know, set of questions go into, you know, what level of service is our community receiving? What level of service, how does that compare to other suburban communities like Simsbury? And do we feel that we need a higher level of service? And that becomes a policy discussion. And to get there, I thought that looking at some of the data would be helpful. So we looked at, uh, our response times in 2021. We have data going back to 2012, but I just looked at last year. So just to give an idea of, there's different timestamps in the data and I want to be really clear what we're looking at in the numbers. For anyone following along, I am in, on slide 25 of the packet, looking at average arrival times. So when you call 911, there's often a minute or two lag until dispatch occurs. And then, once dispatch occurs, that's a timestamp. That's where SVA learns that you're needed. And then you arrive on the scene. So what I did is I calculated the difference between when you find out that you're needed and when you arrive. And sometimes it's not your agency that responds, but it might be mutual aid. So I looked at both. You know, what you, I think, see pretty quickly from the graph is that, you know, when SVA responds, it's a significantly lower response time by, I'm doing some quick math, like five, six, sometimes even seven minutes, depending on the month, than mutual aid, which makes sense. Before I go on, I wanted to see if there were any questions from anyone on the board looking at this data.
So just to frame it up a little bit more, and first, Eric, thank you, because you and Melissa and Maria and Karen did a ton of analysis and reviewing this data, something that I think was really important to this discussion. Is, you know, we have a contract, right? And there's a, there's an agreement that's filed with the state that says what are our response times going to be? And Melissa, I think you're our resident expert on it, right? Is, it's included in the packet, but there's a percentage of calls that need to be on the front end of the response. There's a percentage of calls on the, the second end, and we'll get to that in a second on agreed upon performance. And I was asking earlier, and just for the good of, of the order today, how is that response time looked at? In terms of who is obligated to, and is it just the first car? Is it the second car? Or do we need further clarification on that? Is, is the question I'd, I'd like to put out there.
Yeah, so the EMS, um, the local EMS plan, which has the agreement as basically an attachment to that. And that's the agreement that's signed between the ambulance association, the town, the police department, the fire district in terms of response time, the service level agreement, basically.
Right.
Um, and there's a section for each responding entity in that agreement. So there are two sections included for SVA. One is for the basic level response and the other is for the paramedic level response. And the data here is for the basic level response and it's for the SVA service only, not mutual aid. So that agreement is between basically the town and SVA in this case for the basic level response.
So are you saying that the response times that are laid out in the contract, like where it says greater than 14 minutes, needs to be 10%, that that does not apply to mutual aid responses? That would only apply to SVA aid responses?
That's right, yeah, that's right.
That's correct, yeah. And we have no, yeah, we have no control over, we couldn't even improve mutual aid times because we had no control over where, where they're coming from. As opposed to internally, if there was some issue with our response, then certainly it would be something that could be addressed and tried to, to deal with if we had to.
And the reason I pose that question, and thank you for that, and where you're going is, the, the crux of our conversation is we can attempt to drive down the need for mutual aid, right? And that's part of the second ambulance. So while we can't tell Granby or, I mean, again, we can't make them teleport here, but if we need Granby less, or we need Canton less, or we need UConn less, that actually can help us stay within that, that agreed upon time.
Right, right, right.
The challenge is, is when and how and staffing and everything else, which we've spent 100 hours talking about. I think we're, we're going to, again, get into a little bit here, but Eric, that's the only thing I wanted to add. Thanks.
Yeah, I think, so when you're looking at the table on slide 26, the intent here is to see how SVA, whether, you know, SVA is meeting what's been agreed upon. And, you know, broadly speaking, the expectation is that 80% of calls are somewhere between six and 14 minutes. 10% are faster than that, 10% are longer than that. And when you just look at SVA's response time, you know, you're, you're meeting and, and exceeding that on the five-minute end with about 30% of calls faster than five minutes. I think where, I think some of the more interesting conversation comes in is that when you factor in mutual aid, you know, 26% is still coming in faster than five minutes. But on the longer end, there's more of those times that are taking longer than 14 minutes, where it's about 15%. And I think that then leads to a conversation for us around, you know, first, what is the right metric for us to be looking at and saying what success looks like? And then is this an, you know, an appropriate level of service? And then I'm hoping we can talk a little bit about the second ambulance and the impact on that ambulance's ability to bring down, you know, some of those longer response times. So let me just take a breath there and see if that slide makes sense. So Karen, thank you for your help with slide 27. This was, you know, I decided to take a look at all the calls that took longer than 30 minutes. And there were some, where there were some data entry errors and those were removed. But then there were 10 calls that truly took 30 minutes or longer. And we looked at, you know, where they came from. All of them required mutual aid and the reasons. And one of the questions I asked was, you know, could a second ambulance have helped? And I think the, the conclusion is that in the case of two of these, it would have made no difference. In the case of two of them, it would have made likely quite a bit of difference. And then in the case of six of these, it would have made some difference. And Karen, the way you explained it to me, and tell me if this captures it, is that we still would have needed mutual aid, but the mutual aid would have likely come from closer as opposed to, you know, UConn or East Windsor.
Correct. So especially if you look at the first, the top two, the fact that it's UConn and East Windsor, already in my mind tells me that means we were depleted and Granby was depleted. So they had to go further out to get, for, when East Windsor's coming into town is when I go, oh gosh, yeah, we're already, we're getting too far deep into the calls. So in those days, I believe those were the days that we may have had seven, the second one on as well and we still went that deep. But if another one had been, if we had two on, if it didn't happen that day, it would have at least eliminated, it could have been us and us and Granby. And then hopefully not have to go far, this far out to UConn or to East Windsor.
And Eric, that's a, a great point. You and I were discussing this and I'll, I'll steal your words, but you get the credit for it is the ecosystem has more ambulances when we're staffing a second ambulance, right? So that, that Farmington, Canton, the Simsbury universe, right? So the way you just described it is the agency responding would not be UConn. It would have been Canton or it would have been Granby potentially, had everything worked out the same way. But again, if there was a second ambulance on, then perhaps that, that was the case where, as you said, Eric, it's not going to make a difference because all of the ambulances in the ecosystem were already deployed. Right? So it really is a matter of call volume and timing. So four calls in 39 minutes, four calls in 50 minutes, and four calls in, you know, 68 minutes. You know, those are stresses, again, on the suburban system. Not throwing up my hands and saying, there's nothing we can do about it. But that is one of the challenges with the way the entire state, you know, is run from any MS standpoint, right?
And then, then that's the reason why mutual aid and CME and all these things are set up, because we're not, we're not unique. I mean, other towns have the same issue. And the idea is that it's recognized that it's very easy to deplete a system completely of ambulances. And so we have to be able to figure out a way. And our dispatchers have, if they cannot get an ambulance, can go to CME, which is the main radio system that controls, if you were to listen to it, you could hear all the ambulances in our greater area transporting. They can reach out to them and say, we need an ambulance. And they can go out and help find an ambulance to send our way as well. So this has all been looked at and definitely has their procedures are in place to help when this happens.
And the challenge is, you know, again, the, the system is working the way it's supposed to. But back to the patient experience, it's not working for the patient, right?
Of course, that's, that's the hard part.
There's no blame here, just, but just saying from the reality is, is there somebody sitting with an emergency that doesn't have an ambulance, right? Now, they have an officer or firefighter or perhaps a paramedic on the go-car, but they don't have an ambulance, right? And that's the, that's the, where we get feedback and frustration and, again, I, I don't want to say a lack of understanding, but, you know, folks are in an emergency situation. They don't want the explanation, they want an ambulance.
No problem.
Right? We all appreciate that, so. But what we're seeing here is the data on why that experience happens. Not justifying, not explaining, and not agreeing, we're just saying that's, this is what it looks like, right? And, you know, our dispatchers are on the phone, doing their best to dispatch. That takes time as well. So that's built into that whole patient experience as well.
The next slide that I wanted to look at, I'm going to skip a slide and go straight to the one where we looked at responses that were greater than 20 minutes. Is one of the things I wanted to tease out is, does the presence of a second ambulance in Simsbury that's staffed reduce, you know, reduce some of these longer response times? If you look at the average response time, you can see that in, like, June, July, it came down by about a minute and it pretty much stayed a minute lower for the rest of the year. So that's the average response time. But I was interested in what would happen to some of these longer, longer cases. So the way I approached it was looking at the volume, the call volume per month in 2021, and then look at the percent of calls that were 20 minutes or longer each month. And the caveat here, Karen, is that I did not go through all of these 20 calls and weed out ones that don't belong there, and certainly there are some. But there were about a hundred or so calls that were 20 minutes or longer. And what's just interesting and, I guess, a little disappointing is that it didn't have the dramatic impact I would have hoped to have seen in bringing down the share of calls that are going 20 minutes or longer. And not a criticism at all, it's just, that's what the data says. So then it sort of led to a, a new theory, which is that this, the second ambulance, I'm wondering, almost helps the mutual aid ecosystem more than it even helps Simsbury, perhaps. But I, I don't know how I would tease that out.
And then, and then again, I think that's what, when I responded to your emails, that being able to look at that to actually answer that question thoroughly. Because I, I firmly believe having the second ambulance on definitely benefits the call volumes in Simsbury along with, and it, it's an extra benefit if we can help the town. But I, I think, uh, it, because you've approached it from kind of a different direction than what we had spoken about before, I'd like to actually take a look at, at that a little bit more closely, just to see how that plays out.
Yeah.
When you said the second ambulance, you're talking two full-time.
The two.
Just the, the second one would go all night.
From 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Seven to seven.
And I also want to, Karen, I'm not declaring to the people of Simsbury that the second ambulance isn't working at all. I'm really just saying that I haven't been able to tease out in the data what impact it's having yet.
Right. I guess, I, I would have to say honestly, I haven't looked at how the second ambulance has affected mutual aid. I was looking at how it was affecting us.
Yeah.
So I was being very, how is it doing for Simsbury? But I think it's a very interesting question to see what it's doing for mutual aid.
Well, this, there wasn't in the data that I looked at, by my recollection, is mutual aid out really increased pretty substantially with the second ambulance.
It did, so, um.
It did, and, and our mutual aid in decreased in July, right?
So we, it kind of went all over, so the months that we had the second ambulance scheduled the most, we were going out probably 20 to 25 calls a month when we were. And, but, but the coming in dropped, so we're almost even. They were coming in just as much as we were going out. But, but then we had months, unfortunately, and I hate to do caveats, although we're just flip-flops because the nature of the calls, while we were scheduled pretty well, there still was a whole lot of mutual aid coming in and it's just, and we were still going out. So for the year, for 2021, the average mutual aid was about 32 calls a month and we were going out for about 20 calls a month on average.
You know, another way of perhaps quantifying the benefit of that second ambulance is to say for every mutual aid call avoided, I mean, we know that saves us about six minutes on average.
Right. Yeah. So that's what I'd have to look at, the days where the second one was scheduled and if, if, and the effect of that schedule scheduling in terms of mutual aid. And that's what I would say, I could honestly haven't looked at that closely and I could certainly take a look at that.
Yeah, and I guess, well, I, I do agree with you, the mute, the data isn't definitive, hey, this is the solution. I, I, I do think that there appears to be substantial benefit to Simsbury and to the larger ecosystem in terms of staffing that ambulance seven to seven. So I think, I mean, I, I would go as far as to say that seems to be the baseline, right? Is, and I think that's what your organization is striving to do.
Right. The question, yeah, we're, we're at the point of whether it's sustainable to keep doing that.
Well, is there enough, do you have enough volunteers and paid staff to staff a second one? Because it sounds like, I don't know what's out in the market right now for.
Yeah, we're, we're getting close. We're getting to about 80% of the, I'd like to have it seven days a week, 7:00 to 7:00 PM, but it doesn't happen every single day. But we're, we've been, at least been above the 70% mark for a few months now, which has been good. Because we were dropping down, kind of up and down, which is, unfortunately, kind of skews the data a little bit as well. But I, I think it's, it's just also, this is just the nature of the beast. I had one day, I had four people, just, they were just sitting there, nothing happened in town.
Yeah, and I mean, it's a good thing, right? But it's also, it's a challenge to run an organization that's dependent upon transport.
And there are days where they're, they're, the doors are opening and closing and they're in and out, they're in and out. So it's, it's just one of those, from a business standpoint, it's a little bit, yeah, it's, it's a little harder to plan for, but.
So I know we're getting close to the end here, but I, I do want to, Karen, the only other thing, and, and we can talk about this at, at another point, well, there's a couple of things I want to say. But first is, there does appear to be some analysis and perhaps a review on the seven to seven to seven to nine, seven to 10 perhaps, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, summertime. Again, and I would expect, and I think you guys are looking at that, right? There are periods of the year, there are periods of the week where there probably does drive that need for that second ambulance more often.
Right.
Right? You know, as I look at the, I know we skipped it, Eric, but slide 28, I think it is. You know, hours by day, you know.
Right.
It appears that the volume stays somewhat spiked till nine or 10 o'clock at night. And again, I'm not a professional, I'm just looking at the numbers, but it, it might make sense to spend some more time there. And I would argue, does that, you know, is that our new baseline? Is it seven to nine, seven to 10? You know, again, I expect, you know, the experts to look at it and make the adjustments needed, right?
Yeah, so the other, the other caveat with that is to make it a shift that somebody would want to work.
Yep.
I know it sounds kind of, but that's the, that's the other side of all of this. Uh, working from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM is awful. I'm sorry, you have no day, you have no night. So we're looking at maybe, instead of doing that, maybe it becomes a split shift where it's, the shift is eight to four and four to midnight.
Which is rough too.
But people, some people like to work nights, so four to midnight isn't that bad. You don't have to, you know, you can still go home at midnight and you still have the day the next day. So that was the other, that's kind of the next evolution.
Yep.
It was like if the 7:00, 8:00 to 7:00 PM isn't working and we need to start catching that timeframe, like you were talking about, the shift may have to, have to adjust itself. Because you have to have the quality, I need good employees as well, so.
Yep. No, and I, I certainly appreciate that, you know. It is a challenge. The other piece, and again, I, I want to leave the board with this question. I'll make one more point after that is, I think we need to decide, you know, as we're getting into the end of the year and we're looking at the agreement again, I think there's an opportunity to have a productive dialogue. How do we, you know, articulate the expectations of, you know, that 15%, which again, eight, you guys are, there's only 8% of the calls are at that, you know, over 14 minutes, but 15% overall with mutual aid. And collectively, does the town and, and SVA want to drive that number down? And how do we do it? And do we just say, SVA, do it? Or do we say, SVA, we want to, you know, partner with you and we want to figure it out together? There's a lot of ways to go down that road. But to me, you know, and again, it's been articulated to us, I think we all want to provide the best response we can, right? There's no question of that. There is a funding reality to it. So let's have an honest conversation, an opus con- conversation with this agency and your agency on how do we get there? Right?
Absolutely, that would be great.
You know, because again, I, to me, the, the new baseline is that second ambulance seven to seven. Because it seems, the call volume does seem to support that. And again, I would personally ask for the review of the seven to nine. It sounds like you are with the split shift and I get that the organizational challenges are there. You know, the other piece, and I appreciate your board has invited Maria twice a year to sit in on your board meetings. I think that transparency is really important and that you are an independent, you know, nonprofit. I would continue to drive towards more transparency as possible.
Sure.
Let folks know, you know, when your meetings are, if you can, or otherwise, you know, these are important. You know, these are important issues for folks. And then the third piece is, I think we've talked about an increased level of specificity around reporting. So more of this analysis, perhaps on a quarterly basis. And I know you guys have done a good job of reporting at public safety, but more formalization of that.